Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. On behalf of the members of the school board and Mr. Richard Wright, Chief of Staff, who is sitting in for Dr. Parker this evening, I welcome each of you present this evening and for those of you watching online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge the flag. Here to do the honors is Nigel Waiters, a senior at Heritage High School. Mr. Waiters, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nigel Waiters, a senior at Heritage High School. After high school, I plan to attend a four-year college majoring in sports medicine. At Heritage, I am a student ambassador. I am in the community captains group, partner with Christopher Newport University. I am a part of Men in the Making mentoring group. I am a student athlete and leader on the football and track team. And for the invocation, I would like to do a quote that I stumbled across. "Don't change yourself so that other people will like you. Be yourself so that the right people will love you." And I would like to ask all of you to stand for the pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
You're welcome.
Are members of your family and the Heritage High School family, would you please be recognized and then be recognized? Thank you so much. I'm sure that we ride along with you all are proud. Okay, the next item on our agenda is school board recognitions. Mr. Wright, please join me at the podium. So this evening, the school board has the pleasure of welcoming and introducing Lieutenant General Retired Darrell Williams, the 13th president of Hampton University. President and Mrs. Williams, if you would, come and join us up here. President Williams is a native of West Palm Beach, Florida, and brings to Hampton University over four decades of success in leading military, government, civilian, academic, and business organizations. He served over 37 years in the United States military, so that also means Ms. Myra did too. President Williams, we thank you for that service. And he is a proud graduate of Hampton University, which there are several of us in the room And during his time there, he was named Mr. Freshman, and he served as student leader for three years, a three-year reserve officer training scholarship cadet, a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and was senior class president. How prophetic. His lovely wife, Myra Williams, is also a Hamptonian and a very respected educator, as we discovered today. Thank you so much for your service to education. President Williams joins Hampton after serving as vice president and managing director of a Fortune 250 information technology company, where he was responsible for providing global logistics support to the UK military forces. Thank you for that. President Williams was commissioned into the Army in 1983 as a distinguished military graduate of Hampton University Reserve Officer Training Corps Program. Over the course of his career, he served throughout the continental US, Europe, the Pacific, and the Middle East. President Williams is a member of numerous professional organizations, and he has earned a long list of honors and recognitions. Please join me in welcoming Hampton University President Darrell Williams. We can't let you leave without a few swag from Newport News Public Schools, and we'd love if you'd take a moment to share a couple words.
So first of all, I have to tell you that I believe like I've been set up. Because how do you follow such a phenomenal young man like Nigel? Let's give him a round of applause. He's fantastic. And so in the meeting before this, we talked about some scholarships that Hampton will be offering to the Newport News and the Hampton Roads Community Full Ride Scholarships to Hampton University. And I believe we have a candidate sitting right in the audience before us, huh? Well, that said, I and my wife, Myra, are so delighted to be back in the Hampton Roads area. As was stated earlier, we are both graduates of Hampton Institute in 1983, and it feels so delightful to be back in what all Hamptonians call our home by the sea. We look forward to the relationship that Hampton has historically had with Newport News Public Schools, and in fact, we look forward to strengthening that relationship even further. So thank you in advance for the cooperation. Thank you for the welcome back to this great area, and we can't wait to see you back on Hampton University's campus at our home by the sea. Thank you, and as we say at Hampton University, the standard remains excellence and go Pirates. Thank you.
Okay, I believe you are up. I'll turn the page for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We have another recognition this evening, and that is that of for our school board. Training and development are top priorities for the Newport News School Board. As part of its collective effort to maintain effective leadership, the board has participated in numerous development programs, conferences, and workshops through the Virginia School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association. This evening, our school board members, our superintendent, and our school board clerk are receiving their own awards for their dedication to advancing their expertise from the Virginia School Boards Association. The VSBA Academy provides training in effective leadership and governance to school board members and support staff. Each year, VSBA recognizes board members for their dedication to improving their skills through conferences on leadership, school laws, strategic planning, and legislative issues. Each of the persons being recognized this evening has received a certificate from the Virginia School Boards Association. These awards honor their participation in the academy's programs for the past two years. School Board Chairman Lisa Searls Law, Vice Chairman Dr. Terry Best, and School Board Member Douglas Brown earned the Award of Distinction, and they have those certificates right at their seat, so congratulations. Board Member Rebecca Ammon and our Superintendent Dr. George Parker earned the Award of Honor. Board Members Marvin Harris and Gary Hunter earned the Award of Excellence, and Board Members John Ely and Marvin Harris earned the Award of Achievement. Board Member John Ely and our School Board Clerk Tiffany Moore Buffalo received certificates of recognition. The Award of Distinction honorees, that's the highest award, School Board Chairman Lisa Searls Law, Vice Chairman Dr. Best, and School Board Member Mr. Brown, will be recognized during a special session during the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention. And again, each of them has this award at their seat and a distinctive lapel pin to symbolize their commitment to effective school governance through participation in the academy. So board members, on behalf of the student staff and citizens of Newport News, thank you for your dedication and leadership to the school division, and we congratulate you on your earned awards. Again, we thank President Williams and Mrs. Williams, thank you so much for joining us. At this time, we'll take about a six-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if they choose to do so. You know, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. During this time, our TV audience will have opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
For over three decades, high school students have honed their artistic, musical, and performing talents through Summer Institute for the Arts. After submitting auditions and being accepted, over 70 rising eighth through 12th grade students participated in the intensive program focused on dance, drama, music, and visual arts. Hosted at Woodside High School, students spent three weeks this past summer learning new techniques, styles, and methods to perfect their artistic skills. Highly talented instructors in each discipline motivated and challenged the students while allowing them to grow in a safe and creative educational environment. During a faculty recital, music students were amazed at the level of talent each of their instructors displayed, while also modeling proper performance etiquette to the budding musicians. During their own recitals, dance and music students continued to sharpen their performance skills. Students also took field trips across Hampton Roads, including Chrysler Museum of Art, Hurrah Players Incorporated, and CNU's Torgler Fine Arts Center. These off-site experiences invited students to explore opportunities beyond high school in post-secondary education and future careers in the arts. On the final day, all of the students put their artistic talents on display for family and friends. Dance, music, and theater students combined their gifts during an impressive final performance showcase. And after completing a variety of projects, visual arts students placed their works in an art gallery for all to browse. By successfully completing Summer Institute for the Arts, students received half and honors-weighted credit towards high school graduation, while also gaining a wealth of knowledge and motivation to excel in the arts. Students and families let their imagination soar to new heights during a weekend STEM event. Newport News Public Schools partnered with Atlantic Aviation PHF and Captain Barrington Irving to host a flying classroom experience for the whole family. Over 500 students and their families from 16 Newport News Elementary and Middle Schools were invited to attend based on their past participation in the Virtual Flying Classroom Extended Learning Program. Inside Atlantic Aviation's massive hangar at Newport News Williamsburg International Airport, families toured aircraft and were engaged in STEM exploration and fun simulators. They even met Captain Irving in person, who was happy to sign books and take photos with the starstruck students. Each activity allowed students to use critical thinking, problem-solving, and engineering skills while exploring the world of aviation. Educators from Denby High School's Aviation Academy showed younger students some of the amazing learning options available at the Aviation Magnet Program in high school. NNPS employees from federal programs and the Family and Community Engagement Team helped set up the event, coordinated transportation for families, and made sure everyone enjoyed the unique learning experiences. Bright futures begin with good school attendance. Too many absences, whether excused or unexcused, can keep students from succeeding in school. Started in preschool and elementary school, good attendance and arriving on time helps build the foundation for continued academic achievement and increasing student self-worth. Missing just a day or two every few weeks can cause children to fall behind the rest of their class and make it harder to learn to read. In middle and high school, consistent attendance keeps students on track to graduate while reinforcing an important life skill that will help your child graduate from college and keep a job. Parents, help your children attend school by setting a regular bedtime, maintaining daily routines to finish homework, and getting a good night's sleep. Also, encourage your student to participate in meaningful after-school activities, including sports and clubs. Going to school on time every day is important for students to succeed in school and in Students at McIntosh Elementary started the school year with encouragement from a prominent community leader. Newport News Police Chief Steve Drew took time to visit with first and second grade students and talked to them about how much he cared for the young Scotties. Chief Drew focused on the importance of not bullying, but instead being respectful, kind, and helpful, so these young people can grow into strong future leaders. Ever since Chief Drew was in second grade himself, he knew he wanted to be a police officer because he loves helping people, which still motivates him every day as he serves our city. The students were able to ask insightful questions to learn more about careers in law enforcement. One student even expressed her desire to one day become a police officer. Through their own creative writings, students personally thanked Chief Drew for his time and wished him to stay safe protecting others. As McIntosh students went back to class, they took with them the powerful message that the police chief of Newport News loves them and cares about each and every one of them. At Riverside Elementary, the Bears team up to make learning fun and engaging. Bear Buddies takes place every other week between Melody Simpkins' Kindergarteners and Colleen Budlove's fifth-grade classroom. This collaboration has taken place for years, initially focusing on reading. Now, the teachers adapt their shared time to match what both groups of students are currently learning in class, making it timely and beneficial for everyone involved. The fifth graders are able to take on a mentorship role while learning important leadership behaviors. They enjoy the interaction with the kindergarteners, getting to know their personalities through different activities, and helping them grow as budding readers. And just imagine how these young kindergarteners feel, getting to spend quality time with the biggest kids in school while learning and sharing together. And when they aren't focused on academic growth, they spend intentional time playing during recess with the hope of eating lunch together some of the days. Whether they're reading, exploring science, making art, or just chatting, Bear Buddies enjoy spending time with each other, and the teachers couldn't be more thrilled to see their students growing and learning together.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email or web form up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. So as your name is called, please come forward. I have Alex Fuentes.
Good evening, members of the board. All right. So as a mother to a five-year-old nonverbal special needs child that has been affected by the faculty shortage, I'd like to comment on this matter. My child was assigned to an Achievable Dream Academy, and right from the start, I noted there were some issues. During open house, we were greeted by a teacher whose first response to us, myself and my husband, was, "I'm not going to be here long. There's no permanent teacher yet for this class. I'm only filling in." As a parent, you can imagine the concern right off the bat. At the end of the first two weeks in school, I received a text message on a Monday morning from his teacher saying, "I just wanted to let you know that I have resigned and I will no longer be at this school." When I asked her when her last day was, she said it was this past Friday. Remember, this was a Monday morning. The school was left to scramble that morning to figure out what to do with my nonverbal child along with his other classmates. I was so worried and I was sad, I was disheartened, that this had happened and the impact it would have on the children. That's when I had to do something about it, so I called the office and I also visited the office in person to figure out what was going to happen with the children. From then on, it was a bit of a mess, to be honest with you. There was no communication from any administrators or teachers to parents, and I was completely unaware of my child's progress or lack thereof. I was in the dark about who was with my child for eight hours a day for the two weeks from then. I had to work tirelessly to have my child reassigned to a school where there was a place for him and a teacher who was permanent. Within the first week, the teacher reported progress with communication using picture cards. That is the power of teachers who are consistent with the burden for our special needs children. As we all know, special needs children are not as resilient as a child without any developmental or physical or cognitive delays. All children need consistency to learn. However, special needs children require consistency like no other. Not having an adequate and specifically qualified faculty for these children, along with the lack of consistency, is detrimental to their learning and development. I'm aware of schools, particularly those with moderate intellectual delay classes, also known as MOID, lacking faculty and a need to pull teachers from central office to rotate in order to fill the gap. For this reason, it is very important that special attention be paid to this area of Newport News Public Schools staffing. There needs to be a special focus on not only attaining, but most importantly, retaining qualified faculty to serve the special needs children of Newport News. This will enable them to be as successful as possible so that they will have the maximum opportunity to learn and meet their IEP goals. If not already... Sorry, I lost my place. If not already, there should be some form of incentive for these teachers to be attracted to and motivated to serve these children wholeheartedly, because with a special needs child, to be with them for up to eight hours a day is not an easy task. So please take this into consideration as you continue to serve the children of Newport News. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Now we will move on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the closed meeting on September 20th, 2022, 3.02 minutes from the work session on September 2022, and 3.03 minutes from the regular meeting on September 2022. Also, 3.04 financial reports, including the revenue report for September 22, the expense report for September 2022, child nutrition reports from September 2022, 3.05, the personnel report, 3.06, state school construction grant, and 3.07, a budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'm moving to approve the consent agenda presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Ely?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four. Motion carries seven zero. Great. Please introduce the administrative appointments.
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. Good evening. When I call your name, please say it.
It's always a pleasure to welcome new people to Team NNPS. I will start by introducing Ms. Ryan Daniels as the new Assistant Principal at Denby High School. Ms. Daniels is currently... Ms. Daniels is currently working on her Doctor of Education and Educational Leadership at North Carolina State University. She has Education Specialist Certification in Education Administration and Supervision from the George Washington University. She has a Master's of Education and Curriculum Instruction from the University of Phoenix and a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Elizabeth City State University. Ms. Daniels currently works as an Extended Learning Program Specialist with Petersburg City Public Schools. She has worked as an Interventionist with KIP Eastern North Carolina NC Schools in Halifax, North Carolina. She has worked as a sixth through eighth grade academic support specialist and K-12 STEM Coordinator for White Oak Academic Enrichment Program in Wilson, North Carolina. She has also worked as a science teacher for Nash County Public Schools in Nashville, North Carolina. Ms. Daniels, welcome to Newport News Public Schools. Welcome to our family, and please I introduce any family members and friends that you have with you this evening.
I am honored to have my daughter Bryla with me, as well as my mother Kim, to this occasion.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Blight Jones Johnson as the new Supervisor of Special Education Pre-K 12. Ms. Johnson Jones has a graduate certificate in Educational Leadership from Longwood University and a graduate certificate in Applied Behavior Analysis from St. Joseph's University. Ms. Johnson Jones is a Master of Arts in Special Education, a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Hampton University. She currently works right here with us as an Instructional Behavior Specialist. She has also worked as a Special Education Teacher and Instructional Lead Teacher for Newport News Public Schools. Congratulations to you. And please introduce any family or friends you have with you this evening.
Good evening, Newport News. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. This is my 20th year with Newport News, and I'm honored to take this position. Tonight, I have a host of family and friends, my mother-in-law, my daughter, my mother and father, a cousin who traveled from Richmond, my great-grandmother-in-law, my aunt, and a host of colleagues that have loaned me for this position, and my daughter Hyacinth and my husband, who is Newport News main from Marshall Elementary Auto-Boy Adventure Valley.
Congratulations again to you and the family. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Michelle Jones as the new Supervisor of Special Education Student Supports Eligibility and Regulations. Congratulations. Ms. Jones has a Master of Science in Education from Old Dominion
and a Graduate Certificate in Applied Behavior Analysis from Saint Joseph's University. Ms. Johnson-Jones has a Master of Arts in Special Education, a Bachelor of Science in Psychology, and a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Hampton University. She currently works right here with us as an Instructional Behavior Specialist. She has also worked as a Special Education Teacher and Instructional Lead Teacher for Newport News Public Schools. Congratulations to you. And please introduce any family or friends you have with you this evening.
Good evening, Newport News. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. This is my twentieth year with Newport News and I'm honored to take this position. Tonight, I have a host of family and friends, my mother-in-law, my daughter, my mother and father, a cousin who traveled from Richmond, my great-grandmother-in-law, my aunt, a host of colleagues that have loaned me for this position, and my daughter Hyacinth and my husband, who is Newport News maid from Marshall Elementary, all the way to Benchville.
Congratulations again to you and the family. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Michelle Jones as the new Supervisor of Special Education, Student Supports, Eligibility and Regulations. Congratulations. Ms. Jones has a Master of Science in Education from Old Dominion University. She has a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Hampton University. Ms. Jones currently works as a Special Education Coordinator right here for us in the NMPS. She has worked as a Program Administrator and a Secondary Special Education Teacher here in Newport News. Congratulations again to you. Introduce your family and friends, please.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. And I'm with you in this twenty-fourth year being with Newport News Public Schools. Here have my dad, my nephew, my mom, my daughter, my daughter, my brother-in-law, my sister, and also my friend Carlos, and also a host of the Newport News Public Schools family as well. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
At this time, I'm going to introduce a familiar face, Ms. Scarlett Minto, as our new Chief Financial Officer. Ms. Minto has a Bachelor in Business Administration and a Bachelor of Science Degree in Internet Working Technology and an Advanced Diploma in Accounting from Strayer University. Ms. Minto currently works as our Acting Chief Financial Officer. She has worked as a Director of Budget, ERP and Analytics, Director of Information Technology, and Supervisor of Payroll and ERP Operations. Congratulations again, Scarlett. Did you want to shout anybody out?
Oh, yes. Of course, if Dr. Parker's listening, I want to thank him for challenging me daily. I want to thank community relations and HR for working twenty-four by seven and to give me all the answers I need in five seconds. And then, you know, I got all my care leaders here. And he came back and he beat me out of trouble. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mary Lynn Ross is a mistress for eighteen years and make sure that we were ready when she returned. And one last thing I would like to... If my husband's listening, I want to thank him for holding down the work because I never come home. He just keeps things going. I'm very honored to continue this line for you. Thank you.
Congratulations. I want to introduce Dr. Maya Sharon as the new Supervisor of Special Education. Dr. Sharon has a Doctor of Education from North Central University. Dr. Sharon has a Special Education Certification from Saint Joseph's University, a Master of Arts in Teaching from Towson University, and a Bachelor of Arts in Journalism from Georgia State University. Dr. Sharon currently works as a Special Education Instructional Specialist right here for us. She has worked as a Special Education Director and RTI Specialist, Executive Director of Specialized Services, and Academic Coach for the School District of Philadelphia in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Dr. Sharon has also worked as a National Board Certified Educator for Howard County Public Schools in Ellicott City, Maryland. She has also worked as a teacher for Lusha Charter School in New Orleans, Louisiana, and a Special Education Teacher for Baltimore City Public Schools. Congratulations, Dr. Sharon. Thank you for staying with us. And would you like to introduce family and friends this evening?
Yeah, my boyfriend Jeffrey Tuffins, my son Lennox Tuffins, who's hanging on by a thread. And Jeffrey's parents, one is John Tuffins.
Retired from Newport News Public Schools from Breenwood Elementary School. Thank you for being here. That concludes our board appointments this evening. We want to congratulate all of our Newport News family members. Thank you very much. Let's give them one last round of applause. And at this time, so you have time to have dinner and celebrate. It's a good time for everyone to transition and we can move on with the rest of our board meeting, unless you want to stay with us. So we'll give you a moment to do that. Congratulations again.
Fourth members, do we have any questions for Mr. Fairhardt at this time? Well, thank you for your presence this evening and all your hard work. I guess you've done your due diligence.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion for this agenda item?
I move to approve the FY twenty twenty-four, FY twenty twenty-eight proposed capital plan in the amount of two hundred forty-four million dollars.
Second.
Any questions?
There's a lot of things about this capital budget that I love. And one more thing that I think would... That it needs to be as effective as we need it to be, which is I'd like to make a motion to amend the Denby renovation in the capital budget to move to FY twenty twenty-four and FY twenty twenty-five alongside the Warwick renovation. And I feel that that's very important for our budget because I think that it lessons learned. We've seen... I've seen this type of configuration in the past. We saw the same thing happen with Huntington over the years. It was constantly in the second or the third year, and then it was not funded. And then we were faced with a situation of closing the school. I think that Warwick and Denby, we have acknowledged through our long-range study that both those schools are in a similar shape. So I see no reason to treat them differently in the budget. And so that's why I'd like to make that amendment. I think that we've made tremendous progress and we've come together with a great capital budget. I can recall a time when I was on the board and we were only doing a hundred million dollars for our capital budget. And we now have two hundred forty million dollar capital budget. I believe the budget truly reflects our needs. It's a lot of great things, the security and safety enhancements that are in here, indoor athletic spaces, et cetera. But this is the one piece that I think is missing from the budget is moving Denby to the proper area of prioritization that it should be. So I'd like to make that motion to amend to move Denby renovation to FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-five.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there discussion on moving this additional amendment? Are there any questions that we would like to ask Mr. Fairhardt at this time?
Let's see, I kind of agree with Douglas saying. We want to be proactive because what we don't want to be is the same situation we are with Huntington Middle School. I think putting it at the forefront of our budget and letting the city council know that this is a main priority and how we need to fund this now and start having that same conversation because what we don't want to happen is we have to do what we did to Huntington to Warwick High School. So I think the more we have that at the forefront of city council, those funds can be appropriated because we don't want what happened before. We didn't know anything about it when we actually had those funds and requested in the budget for Huntington Middle School. So instead of playing those games with the city of, "We didn't know." Yes, you do know. We mentioned this is a priority.
Any other comments as we move forward?
Could I come back to the... So that's going to change our budget proposals to what we're going to approve now? Just so we are all clear.
If I heard the amended motion correctly, that we'll be moving the two point eight million from FY twenty-six to the FY twenty-four budget.
Correct. And the forty-eight million from FY twenty-seven to FY twenty-five.
To give us a total of...
The five-year total remains the same.
Five-year total remains the same.
It's a sequencing.
So does that require that we have the building of Denby in what year? Does that affect where we have it currently?
We currently have it proposed for FY twenty-seven with design work in FY twenty-six. So sequenced Warwick next year, construction the year that follows, Denby, then construction, as it's proposed.
And how will that affect those other items that we have under CIP? You know, we're just going to keep those the same?
That would be my recommendation. And we sequence this way somewhat intentionally because the design work, we felt like the design work was important. You know, I talked to Mr. Brown about this. It's design-build, you know? So we get the design done and then we put the project to bid. If we get the design done, both designs done, say philosophically next year, we're not going to get both projects probably bid and funded next year. So we're going to have a design that's going to be two, three, four years potentially out of date. And then pricing that project is going to be difficult as well. So there are some challenges there.
I have a question. Well, this... I don't know. I'm trying to... I don't know if we have the right people to answer. But just throwing this out there, if we were to do both at the same time, I know, I'm pretty sure this is not construction that's going to happen over summer. They're pretty big projects. So we'd be putting kids in portables. There'd be a fair amount of disruption at a particular school while this is going on. So I guess it does raise the question, if we're doing both at the same time, what does that do as far as additional costs? I mean, would we have been able to reuse some portables at Warwick, then shift them over to Denby when Denby starts undergoing construction? If there's conversely other economies and scale to doing them at the same time?
Correct. And that's currently our plan with the modular unit at Heritage, just to repurpose that once it's been utilized to its maximum extent possible. Once Huntington Middle School is up, we would be able, in the same position to do that with portable modular units that would be necessary at Warwick, could be transitioned to Denby at a lesser cost to the school division.
I definitely understand what you're saying a hundred percent. And if we was working... If we was working with the council who's had that same vision, that would be fine. But when we... This is like deja vu with the Huntington situation, where they put it in their first year of priority. That was the conversation that was happening with us. And we still don't even have a Huntington Middle School. So it concerns me if we push this to that year, that's going to turn into probably twenty, thirty, if we don't have a council that understands the value and to know that this is the plan, we're working together. I'm just so afraid of the situation we are in with Huntington, happening with Warwick and Denby High School. Not so much with Denby, especially Warwick. Just visiting that school, our kids deserve a better environment. I think the sooner we could put them in a safer environment, the better it is. The way schools were built in the sixties and the fifties is totally... We wasn't dealing with mass shootings. As I visit that school, it's so many different entrance ways. It's just, I'm like, the walkie-talkies don't work at one part of the building. So God forbid they have a crisis situation that long as they got it fixed when I visited, it was still a walkie-talkie issue. But just that same infrastructure is stuff that concerns me as far as safety. So I think the further we prolong these matters, I just don't want what happened with Huntington with no kids, where a middle schooler say, "I felt like I've been cheated out of my middle school year," happening again in other schools. So if we can come up with the... Have a serious conversation with our council. Hey, this is what we're planning to do. Hopefully, we can get to funding that we need to move ahead. Then that's a different story. I just don't want the same situation. Well, you didn't put it in your first year, so we didn't know that you needed that year. So that's just one of the things that concerns me about prolonging it. But I definitely understand what you're saying.
Do you have other questions or comments?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know...
Bottom line is, I think both sides have some legitimate points. It just depends on what's the priorities. And I think the priority, you know, safety, you got to also understand, you can design ten projects in a year. I mean, those designs are designs. They forward the money, you go into design. When it gets into constructing a project, then that's when you get into the time delay where we're going to move students at. So you still can actually have two designs done and completed. And, you know, hopefully, the council will be thinking the same way we've been thinking for years, you know, put us down as priority in your CIP. That has not been done. So I don't know how many other times we have to continue to capitulate to them. The bottom line is, we've seen this show before. We've seen it over the last five or six years. And the only sticking point will be the construction part because, you know, you can't... You got to move kids around. But I think I would rather deal with that problem versus them giving us another reason not to fund it. Okay?
Mr. Fairhardt, when are we projecting? What would be your recommendation to put Denby High School in our CIP for...?
It's before you know. This is what we proposed in so...
I think that... I'm not asking the question that I want because, yes, I do know it's before. What do you think? What do you think that the repercussions would be if we don't do it at what's before us, if we do it sooner rather than later?
And that's kind of some of the challenges that I spoke to in regards to design and then construction, moving kids, cost savings when we relocate children. I also think, you know, to Mr. Ely's point, we're also going to ask the city council, a potentially new city council, for a pretty big ask and put them probably in a position to say no.
Right.
And do we want to start our new relationship that way?
Yeah.
Are there further comments? I saw a couple little hands here. Yes.
And I do agree because any way you look at it, there's going to be a new city council. Okay? There's going to be a new city council. And to... We don't want to go into such a big ask. And if you saw overseas, hate to make that overseas, but you saw what's happening over in Europe when they put their new prime minister in and she went to too many cuts and too many... So fast. We have the experts here that, you know, kind of understand this. What we didn't know two or three or four years ago, that the only thing that the city council was doing was financing the first year. Okay? Those other years, we didn't... We were putting them in there. We didn't know they were not even putting it... Now that we know they're processed, now that we know their process, you know, we take it from those experts. So like I said, again, no need to go get it and design, to design a building of such, to throw those designs back out and then go back and revisit those designs again, it costs us more money. You know, I think, you know, we have a plan in front of us. I think that we're a lot more educated now as how the city does business. I said, we just, again, next year, when we know where to put the money in next year for these following years. We didn't. We thought we put it in five years and then, you know, we just... They was automatically added to their budgets, but they did not do that. So again, a lot of work has been put in forth to get us to this point today. And I just want us to really consider, you know, let's not jump in the deep end when we're going to have a brand-new city council. Just be, you know, let's, you know, take something. Again, as I said months ago, you know, these are the experts. These are the experts.
I was just going to add, you know, there's nothing that prevents us from, if we were to approve this and say they didn't approve some of the twenty twenty-four numbers, it's going to start getting compressed. You know, we've got our plan, you didn't fund this. Well, all of a sudden, you are going to have a big ask because we mean we really need this by this time, so...
You know, Madam Chair, I think the big ask has always been there. You know, we went through, did a lot of work this summer to come up with that seven hundred, what, fifty million dollars, right? To, if we had to get the school division to shape modern twenty-first century, right? It was cost seven hundred fifty million bucks. And so we did that hard work upfront, to be honest with the citizens, that said, "This is the shape that we're in." And the reason we're in that shape is because we never were supported by the city council. It's just that simple. So now seven hundred fifty million versus what? Fifteen, twenty, thirty millions or whatever the case may be? The bottom line is, this city has not invested in the school division. So when you ask for crumbs, you get crumbs or you get nothing. So it is... So, it is probably best that we, as a school division, actually, when we say we're serious about something, right, we have to show them. The bottom, I think they're going to support it, I, I think the new council will support it, I really truly do. But, you know, we did a lot of work, and I, I'm, it really gets to me, where we are both leadership bodies, we're both endowed by the Constitution to make decisions for our constituents. I am governed by the Constitution of Virginia, right? I could be held accountable, right, for not providing for these children, by any means necessary, I can be held accountable. This board can be held accountable legally for not putting our best foot forward, and it, it, it's a good foot you put forward, you did a lot of work. It's not only work that's been done, but I just think as far as the leadership of this school board, we are charged to do that, we are charged to give them the big number, we are charged to say, hey, this is seven hundred and fifty million bucks, this is what happened, you know, supporting the school division over the last twenty years, or whatever the case may be, this is what you get. So, I think we have to just stick with it. There's room for conversations, or whatever the case may be, but I, you know, I support that change, and I'm sure some other board members do, or some other board members may not, but I think it's a good conversation to have, so. Thank you.
The conditions of Warwick and Denby, how do you, long do you think is safe for keeping the kids in the building with the conditions? Just looking at the study we had years ago about, we should have been addressed these issues, how much time do you think we have?
I think I would be remiss to make a projection along that, those lines, but I think we all know that they both are in dire need and require.
It's just, it's just a, a unknown, you know, situation, because you look at the safety of the buildings, and you want to just make sure we don't have three schools closed at one time, and then the other, the average age of our school is about fifty years old, when is going to be time for, I just don't want to reach a point where we are like six or seven schools that are in dire need and we not addressing them. And I know the school board, you know, we put it in the budget, we're passionate about making sure our kids are safe and have new school buildings, it's just, I guess like the rest of the board, say, Gary and everybody, just having a relationship with city council that knows that, look, this is what we need, let's come up with a plan so there's no gassing, let's just do what's best for children. Because when people move to cities, they move to cities for, one of the good reasons for the school, the education and the, the school building, so I think we do a good, do a good work, and it's just one of those situations where you just got to have people in place that care about education.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll just add, I had the opportunity to sit as part of the committee, as did Mr. Harris, and one of, one of my takeaways as we were going through it was, the consultants did say, we've done a good job, one way or the other, of keeping our schools, you know, warm, cool, safe and dry, you know, not like mobile conditions or things like that. So, I mean, we've done a good job with what we have. Yes, these things do need to be done, but I didn't take away from the steering committee, I didn't take away that there was an imminent danger.
Okay.
And, and if you sequence the priorities from the committee, safety and security was first, and then it was deferred maintenance, and then major renovations at Denby and Warwick.
Yes.
So, they didn't really lump the two together, but your concern as far as entry points, et cetera, is understandable.
And there's some parts in the budget for that.
Okay, thank you all for the discussion on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the, yeah, for the discussion, and thank the board for, for hearing the motion. Like, as, as was stated, I do think that we've got a, we've got a really great budget, and I know that we've, this has been at least a couple of years, or at least eighteen months in the making, through the, through the committee, and I appreciate all the hard work that has been done. I think we've got, we have identified the needs, but now it's time just to make sure that we have the prioritization that takes place, and I'll just echo what Mr. Ely said, because he was on the board when we had the joint meeting with city council, and they told us to our faces, if you don't put it in the first year, then you did not want it.
Correct.
That is what, that is what the mayor and the city manager said to us during our joint meeting, if you don't put it in the first year, then you did not want it. So, we have, I think that the question before us is, do we want Denby High School? And from, from, you know, for me, I want it.
All right, so we need to call the roll on that amendment.
Yes, I'm doing clear with the amendment. Hey, so I heard, Mr. Brown, you want to amend the current motion on the floor to?
Add the CIP to the budget plan to add Denby High School renovation aside with Warwick High School, but there was a specific?
Correct, Denby High School renovation to, to assign two point eight million dollars from FY twenty-six to FY twenty-four, and forty-eight million dollars from FY twenty-twenty-seven to FY twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. What was the second dollar amount?
And the second, by Mr. Harris.
No, the, the second dollar amount.
Oh, the second dollar amount, forty-eight, forty-eight million dollars.
Are we ready? All clear what we're vote, what you all are voting on?
Yes.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
And I have, Mr. Brown made the motion to amend, and Mr. Harris second. Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Mrs. Aiman?
Against.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Against.
Motion carries five-two.
I think it was four-three.
I'm sorry, four-three.
For the record, four-three.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is four point zero-two, several revised policies from the instruction chapter of the policy manual. So, Mr. Wright?
Yes, thank you, Madam.
Madam Chairwoman, do we need to vote on the overall CIP since?
That's right.
Because we amended.
Yes, that's right.
That was an amendment.
So, now we need a motion to?
On the actual CIP.
On the actual CIP.
The motion was to amend the?
The current one on the floor.
Which was to approve?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be.
We voted to amend the CIP, but now we have to vote on the whole CIP, don't we?
No, you, you should not.
The original motion was to approve the, we turned out the best to approve the CIP.
That's right.
And then there was amendment to?
A motion for amendment.
The proposed CIP.
Amendment to the proposed motion to approve the CIP, to amend the?
Correct.
The proposed CIP, I'm sorry, that sounds so confusing, but?
No, it's not.
So, my understanding was that you voted to approve the CIP in an amended form?
In an amended form with the?
That was my understanding, but I could be wrong, you correct me.
I, I, that's why I didn't call the roll again, because that's, with the amendment, with adding the Denby High School to the motion?
To the original motion to approve the CIP.
To the original motion, yes.
Correct.
Because the dollar amount didn't change, it's still two hundred.
Correct, my, my motion did not amend the dollar.
Two hundred forty million point four, right? Yeah.
Right, it just moved it.
It just added the Denby High School component to it.
Just moved.
Madam Chairwoman, I, I understand that, but do we want to go on record now that it's moved? So, if there's a different, a stronger number for the amended CIP that presents a stronger front to city council?
I would think that that vote that we took really is?
I'm getting a yes.
Yeah, whether it's failed or passed, I mean, the vote is the vote.
It passed four, four-three.
All right, so, that does put us on policies now. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Brooks is available to answer any questions the board may have regards to the new revised policies that were presented and that are under action item now. Also, we have Mr. Wallin to assist if necessary. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, we shared, we've been grouping the instructional policies to bring before you for action, and tonight, we have five of policies on board docs for action. The first is IFC multiculturalism, the second is IHCD-A dual enrollment, the third is IJ, I'm sorry, IJND technology acceptable use policy, the fourth is IJNDA Newport News Public Schools internet sites, and the fifth is IKA evaluation of student learning.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions at this time? So, we're going to take these individually. So, do I have a motion to adopt IKA evaluation of student learning?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy IKA evaluation of student learning.
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out that I appreciate all the hard work by the board members and the policy committee on putting together what I think is a very strong policy for IKA. I appreciate that we are recognizing parents and guardians explicitly in this policy as partners in education, and I think that speaks highly, speaks well of the, of the board, and I appreciate the, making sure that we're doing that acknowledgement through our evaluation of student learning.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Aiman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Next up is IJNDA Newport News internet sites. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve IJNDA.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Aiman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
The next up is IJND technology acceptable use policy. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept policy IJND.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to make the, the comment that I think we're doing some important work here by acknowledging cybersecurity and its importance. I believe the previous policy did not cover adequately cybersecurity and our procedures for ensuring that our systems are well-protected, and we know that this is, hacking is a, is a big problem currently facing government institutions, so I appreciate the, the work that's gone in to making sure that we have adequate coverage there.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Ely?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Aiman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, next up is IHCD-A regarding dual enrollment. Do I have a motion for this policy?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve IHCD-A dual enrollment.
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Any comments?
Well, Madam Chair, I'll comment on this one as well, just because I'm very excited. I'm really excited about dual enrollment and what it offers our students, that we've codified now that they can be dual-enrolled, both at the high school and at a secondary, post-secondary institution, where I believe previously, we had not codified that as a part of our policy, so I'm very excited about what this offers students and the opportunities that it's going to open up for more than just our governor's school students.
Yes. Madam Chair, I want to thank the administration for, because I remember everyone first brought it up, so I just want to thank you all for, I guess, looking into it and, and making it possible, really appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Ely?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Aiman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, and then our final policy up for action this evening is IFC multiculturalism policy. Do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
Could you say the letters of the answer?
IFC.
I make a motion to accept policy IFC multiculturalism.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And discussion on this one?
Sure, Madam Chairwoman, I will, I will just make a comment. I do appreciate all the work that's gone on to this, into this policy, and a lot of it was the same that we've had for a long time. There is an addition on some additional licensed employee training, and about a year ago, when it came up, I'd asked the administration to, you know, share sort of the curriculum that was going to be picked for this, and I understand that has been, but I haven't seen it and I've asked for it. I know there've been some concerns at the university level for some of the curriculum that have been rolled out. I understand the VDOE has provided some, but I, I don't yet have the full information to feel comfortable supporting this policy, but I know others may, but that's just my one concern, but a lot of it is still the same that it has been for our division.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this policy? Okay, please call the roll.
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Aiman?
Against.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion carries six-one.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the board for their tireless work on approving these policies, working on them, getting the language right, asking the right questions. This is the work of the board, and I really appreciate you answering all the emails that have been flying your way. Uh, let's see, so, see where we are now. We'll move on to section three. Um, did I pull the wrong sheet?
Section four.
I think I did. Uh, we'll move on to section five. You don't want to go all the way back to three, do you? Section five, reports and information, five point zero-one, monthly school update, and Mr. Wright, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we are starting off this month's school report with good news regarding graduation rates. I want to introduce Dr. Eleanor Blow, Director of Secondary School Leadership, to kick off the first portion of our monthly school report. Dr. Blow?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Best, school board members, and Chief of Staff, Mr. Wright. I'm Eleanor Blow, Director of Secondary School Leadership, and I am pleased to be here to share exciting news about the work of our students and staff here in Newport News Public Schools. Newport News Public Schools continues to prepare students to graduate career, college career and citizen-ready. We are pleased to share the good news regarding our two thousand twenty-two graduates, the graduating, graduation rate for the class of two thousand twenty-two increased to ninety-five point eight, and the dropout rate decreased to less than one percent. This performance is especially significant, given the obstacles that many of the, that many of these members of this class faced during their time in high school. The class of two thousand twenty-two faced unexpected closure during their sophomore year, they successfully adapted to virtual and hybrid learning in their junior year, and persevered to complete graduation requirements in four years. The on-time graduation rate monitors a cohort of high school students entering ninth grade and assesses the graduation and dropout rates of these students in four years. The school division's on-time graduation rate has continued to increase since two thousand eight. As indicated in the chart, in two thousand eight, the on-time four-year graduation rate was seventy-two point nine, and in two thousand twenty-two, it ha, it has progressed to an all-time high of ninety-five point eight. It is also noteworthy that the school division's overall completion rate, which includes students who have completed their GED or earned a diploma, is ninety-seven point five. By keeping the focus on college and career citizen readiness, Newport News Public Schools' graduation rate has consistently remained above the state average. Newport News Public Schools' efforts to increase on-time graduation rates resulted in average? resulted in averages higher than the state average in most student gap groups, which includes black students, white students, Hispanic students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and English language learners. Also, the dropout rate for these subgroups are lower than the state average as well. Graduation rates in each of our high schools remains high, with Achievable Dream maintaining a 100% graduation rate for seven consecutive years. Each of our high schools had increases in graduation rates from last year, with some increasing nearly three percentage points. Through the dedicated efforts of our graduation coaches, attendance officers, school counselors, and administrators, our students have been successful in on-time graduation. Our graduation coaches, who are assigned to most of our high schools, assist with early intervention with our students, identifying those who have fewer than six standards of learning tests, identifying freshmen who need additional support during the school year by providing resources and developing relationships. I would like to recognize Ms. Vanessa Stevens, our graduation coach supervisor. She has helped to lead the work with our graduation coaches in each of our schools. Lastly, the achievement of our high schools regarding graduation rates is a team effort. Everyone in Newport News plays an important part in developing our students and getting them prepared to be college, career, and citizen ready and achieving the milestone of graduation. I'm pleased to share this good news. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And next we have Mrs. Buckingham and some wonderful young people to give our youth development update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mrs. Searl's Law, Vice Chair, Dr. Bass, and members of the school board, and Mr. Wright. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on all of the great Stand Month activities that have been taking place the last few weeks in Newport News Public Schools. Schools across the division have placed an intentional focus on bullying prevention and activities that promote positive school culture, to include creating a sense of belonging and membership, helping students get connected to various school-based clubs and activities, and giving students extraordinary opportunities to lead and serve. In the interest of keeping with that trend, I would like to introduce you to some very special guests. Last year, the Office of Youth Development launched the Emerging Leader Institute. Students in this program have been exposed to various professional development opportunities over the last few months that will help them grow in their leadership abilities. All ELI students were given the opportunity to apply for a youth development internship. While the decision wasn't easy, we narrowed it down to the five amazing students that you see on the screen in front of you. They're a great-looking group of kids, aren't they? And I promise you, they are very impressive. With that being said, tonight you were in for a special treat. I would like to introduce to you two of our youth development interns who will be providing tonight's Stand Month update. Max Bell is a junior at Warwick High School and is involved in numerous clubs and activities. In addition to being an emerging leader, he is also a member of the Warwick High School Marching Band, the Principal's Advisory Committee, and Youth Volunteer Corps. He is a karate brown belt and enjoys playing rec league soccer in his spare time. He is also an active volunteer at his church, and in the future, he hopes to attend the University of Virginia with a possible focus on law. Carson Jarman is a senior at an Achievable Dream middle and high school and is a very active participant in his school community. In addition to being a member of the Emerging Leader Institute, he is also a member of Young Men of Distinction and the 3.0 Club. Carson takes leadership to the next level by also serving as the historian for the National Honor Society and the current vice president for the Newport News Police Department's Young Adult Police Commissioners. He is passionate about art, gaming, and coding, and has aspirations of attending either Norfolk State University or Virginia Tech to study computer science or graphic design. Please join me in welcoming Max and Carson to share our updates this evening.
As was mentioned in the school board report last month, Stand is our Newport News Public Schools Division-wide campaign to discourage bullying and to promote positive school culture. Our elementary schools have been busy putting the Stand mission into action. Although school was canceled on the World Day of Bullying Prevention, NMPS students and staff didn't miss a beat. Many of them participated the very next day in blue, up to Stand Together against bullying. Several schools also coordinated Stand Spirit Weeks to encourage a scene, a sense of belonging, while also creatively taking a stand against bullying. School-wide year-round kindness campaigns were served as a preventive strategy that empowers students' voice and create a common language around behavior and expectation. The annual Operation Kindness Day, which is a preview to the Operation Kindness Week in February, challenged many students and staff to engage in random acts of kindness to demonstrate how easy it is to just be kind. Additionally, Hydenwood Huskies hosted student-led talent shows to promote kindness and friendship. Student involvement promotes student success outcomes, which is one goal of the Journey 2025 strategic plan. Get Connected Week is youth development's intentional effort to increase student involvement by ramming up, ramping up, club activities promotion and recruitment in all schools. Some examples shared in the pictures here, up there, include Discovery STEM Academies, Garden Club, and Hydenwood Elementary's Kindness Club. Bullying prevention is more likely to happen when students lead the work. Student Leadership Day raised awareness about opportunities for student-led to lead, serve, and contribute. It also created an opportunity for schools to recognize outstanding student leaders. Pictured above are images of the first meeting of the Principal's Advisory Committee at Riverside and Student Council Association election assemblies at Richneck. Students at Richneck also participated in Leadership Switch Day, which students got to take their turn leading classes as teachers for a day. I wish I could do that. A new elementary, elementary Rise initiative was launched in three elementary schools this month. The Level Up Program is a pilot taking place at Stony Run, Sedgefield, and Newsome Park in collaboration with Newport News, police departments, and faith-based organizations. This program was created in parallel with Rise, My Brother Keeper Program, which you will hear more about later. Students in this Level Up Program participate in regularly, regularly scheduled sessions which are designed to build positive identity, essential skills like decision-making, and service learning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Middle and high school students led multiple stand activities this month. Similar to our elementary schools, students at Huntington wore blue in solidarity to take a stand against bullying on Blue Up Day. Booker T. Washington held a bullying prevention door decorating contest to raise awareness about bullying prevention, while students at Heritage pledged to stick together against bullying with their creative duct tape bully-free pledge wall. Heritage also coordinated a Stand Week centered completely around bullying prevention and inclusion. To promote, to promote student involvement, several schools hosted Get Connected Club Fairs that informed students of available club options and activities. The staff at Warwick High School, woo, created the Copland Connection Corner, a unique approach to make students feel connected to the school community. Hallway walls were lined with cards for each and every Warwick Raider that were then filled with encouraging words from staff members. This was their way of showing students that they are all in when it comes to building positive relationships with students and school culture. In addition to the many homecoming Spirit Weeks that also helped to build school community, students at Heritage participated in an additional Stand Spirit Week filled with activities promoting inclusion and school spirit. Sorry, it's school spirit. Sorry about that. Denby High School extended their community building beyond the school walls and planned a school-wide festival, which is taking place this Thursday, that will welcome not only students and staff to participate, but also families and students from neighboring theater, middle, and elementary schools. Student leaders have been shining all across Newport News Public Schools during Stand Month as they have led pep rallies and coordinated Spirit Weeks activities. Several schools have taken time to recognize their outstanding champions for leadership and service both in their schools and the community. Achievable Dream students took a stand to raise awareness of breast cancer, and the Heritage NJROTC held its annual Adopt a Spot cleanup on Marshall Avenue to give back to their community. My Brothers Keeper and My Sisters Keeper programs were introduced at the last school board meeting as a tier-three intervention that was piloted last year at Heritage High School. As a result of the funding received from the Newport News Violence Intervention Prevention Grant, that program was able to be expanded in all of our high schools. These programs kicked off in collaboration with various community partners and faith-based organizations in each high school this week for nearly 240 students. Over the course of the year, the students will participate in monthly exercises and experiences that will build decision-making, communication, and other essential skills, while connecting them with positive role models who are committed to helping the students achieve positive school and life outcomes. In closing, we would like to share with you the remaining stand activities for the month. We are looking forward to Stand Night at Todd Stadium on Thursday, November 28th at 7:00 p.m. Please join us for the Warwick versus Minchville football game and help us to finish Stand Month strong with our annual halftime walk for bullying prevention. We hope to see you there. We also would like to note a change in the calendar. Stand Together and Read Day was moved from this week, October 18th, to Monday, October 31st. For a full list of Stand Month activities by school, you can visit the NMPS Bullying Prevention webpage. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share all of the amazing stand activities that have been taking place so far this month in Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you, Max and Carson. Guys, I just ask, have to ask if we can give them one more round of applause. Congratulate them on presenting our report for this month, and we welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
I just want to say thank you all for this amazing presentation. And the great thing about your presentation to the board is you evolved the children who's actually experiencing it. That makes it more inviting and makes like you're a part of it. And I just love the passion that y'all have and keep up the great work, all that y'all doing. And Newport News is definitely something to see young people involved and passionate about what they're doing. So, thank you.
Really, thank you. Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
I'll echo my colleagues' comments. Just a fantastic, wonderful presentation, Mr. Wright. I don't think you're gonna be able to top that, so you might as well, we might as well end the meeting right after. So, highest all-time graduation rate, lowest dropout rate. And then we hear from some, two of our outstanding young men who are very articulate and just very, showing their educational experience. So, I really appreciate it, a great presentation. Very encouraging to me as a board member, thank you.
We're proud of you. They are quite amazing. Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair, Searl's Law, Vice Chair, Dr. Best, members of the board, and Mr. Wright. NMPS has programs in place to ensure students have a safe and nurturing environment in which to learn. But our partnership of students, parents, family members, and others are the most important link in this effort. We would like to thank Community Relations for all of the rollout of the Speak Up Campaign. Schools were provided with posters, flyers, and a link was placed on the front page of each school's website, equipping families and students to report any concerns. The bullying protocol, including cyberbullying, continues to be in place according to VDOE guidance and as stated in our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. I would like to thank family members and students who have reported concerns so far this year. It takes courage to speak up, but it keeps everyone safe. These reports can always be done anonymously, but please remember to identify which school you are referencing. Safety reports are time-sensitive, so remember, don't delay, report that same day. That concludes my portion. If there aren't any questions, I will turn it over. Will I make it through? So at this time, I would like to turn everything over to Dr. Tina Manglamott, our Chief Academic Officer. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Wright, members of the board. Pleasure to be here this evening. I'm here to present to you a couple of updates from our leadership team in the Department of Teaching and Learning. The first thing that we've all been waiting for is PSAT, right? I know that we had a lot of questions about that. We have PSAT Day coming up on October 25th, where we are testing all ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders in the PSAT. We have the PSAT, the eighth and ninth grade test that we'll give to our ninth grade students, and we have the PSAT and the N, I always get this wrong, the NMSQT test to our 10th and 11th grade students. We have already tested our middle school students in all middle schools last week on October 12th, but three of our middle schools chose to wait until this week to test with their high, their high school students, which was Achievable Dream, Enterprise, and Point Option. And when we work through the schedule, it's a testing day, so we also have Seniors Future Day on this particular day, where our seniors are then brought in and they have experiences with college and career. So it just depends on the high school and what activities that they're going to have available for their seniors, but they have convocations, they have their senior breakfast and lunch, and there's a partnership with our workforce council and next generation. So lots of good stuff planned for our senior students as well. To prep our students, which is just as important because we want them to be successful on this exam, we've adjusted our schedules to make sure that they have plenty of time, they don't feel rushed. We've also had our school counselors meet with all of our students that are undergoing testing. They've told them what the, reviewing the test, reviewing those testing requirements. They've provided them with actual hand-out study guides so they could study for it, but then they also showed them how to get online access so they can look at the online study guides, but also some practice test questions. They've also made sure that our students, and we're saying this again, just not only for our students, but for our parents that are listening at home as well, is that our students need to bring an approved calculator to the test with them, a number-two pencil, and let me go back. The approved calculator is in the study guide, so it gives a list of calculators, and then telling them to get a good night's sleep, and of course, have, bring a snack and a drink. It's gonna be under the desk during the test, but if they need that, they can have that as well. The next thing we want to update you on is just our plan for instruction to carry on. It's continuity of instruction, right? So when the building closes, we will still have instruction taking place. The good thing about our pandemic is it has brought all of us into the world of virtual learning. All students have access to a device. And so when our buildings are closed, we will continue with instruction. And if we're closed for inclement weather, if it's an emergency, or even if it's a planned closure to provide teacher professional learning or some sort of planning day. Just as we did prior during the pandemic, all teachers will post assignments through Canvas that students can complete, but more interactive, not just worksheets, right? Videos of instruction, interactive simulations, those types of things where it's not just practice, but it's true learning that is taking place while they are at home. Teachers will also provide time for synchronous check-ins and to have small group instruction during this time. We're also looking at a plan for our littlest learners, our primary students. We know it's not always the easiest for our parents to stay at home with them and have them work through things asynchronously. So we're looking at how we can record lessons, possibly even partnering with Channel 47 so we can have our videos broadcast to our littlest learners through the television. So that concludes our updates to you this evening. Are there any questions? Yes.
So when Saunders was closed that day, did students log on and continue with instruction?
That particular day, they did not, no. We are just planning for this now. We weren't sure who had the Chromebooks home, who didn't, so just setting that expectation and making sure all Chromebooks go home.
Thank you.
I have a couple of just clarification questions for parents and families that might be watching. So the, all ninth graders in all the high schools are taking it on the 25th. It's just those few middle schoolers that were associated with. It's just those few middle schoolers that were associated with those highs. Okay, just so, it's gonna be the twenty-fifth.
And actually, when I look back at that slide, we also have a couple seventh graders who are taking that exam, and I think we had one or two sixth grade students take the P S A T as well.
The more exposure you can get, the better. And the, do you know, I've seen the notice come about a calculator, and you can't have one that has, you can't use a calculator like on a laptop that has keys. Do you know if phone calculators are allowed?
I would have to look on that, but I doubt it highly.
I know a lot of students tend to use those, so they may have to get one or borrow one.
Yeah, it's really hard because they have access to the internet, so I doubt it.
And, let's see, I had one more question, just a second. Just for my own clarification, so the P S A T to, or the P S A T, the eighth, ninth graders is a different test than the National Merit?
Yes, it is. The eighth, ninth grade that's given to our middle school students and ninth graders is a different test. Only the tenth and eleventh graders can qualify for that.
Thanks. I'm glad to hear about the asynchronous learning if we have bad weather. It's really good. It's using what we got, so I like that.
And that was gonna be my question along the same line to the P S A T, the question, qualify for National Merit Scholar. Could, is there a pathway for us to offer that to ninth graders who their parents want to opt into that, that, that test if they?
I do not know the answer to that question, Mr. Brown. I think that's a College Board question, and that would have to be something, and I'd have to scour their site and see if that's even possible. Good question, though. We'll find out for you. All right, well, thank you. It's now my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Kathy Alexander. She is our Executive Director of Child Nutrition and Wellness.
Thank you, Dr. Manglomond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I just wanted to talk to, just pretend I'm Nancy tonight. She couldn't be here tonight. So, I wanted to talk to you about some of initiatives that she has done and her staff. We did flu shots for both students and staff. A thousand six hundred and eighty-seven students received flu shots during all the clinics. They were in every school with Health Hero. And then we did a thousand one hundred and fifty employees that received flu shots as well. And currently, the Health Department is not reporting any flu outbreaks at this time. And then COVID numbers are still remaining low in our community. So, not much to report about that. So, now I'm happy to bring up Shay Coats from Director, Executive Director of Transportation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Sarah's Law, Vice Chair, Dr. Best, School Board Members, and Mr. Wright. I'm here to give you a quick update on the T-Pass Student Ridership Program. I'd like to review some key dates and how we got to this point. In August of two thousand twenty-one, we had to delay the launch of the program due to manufacturing of R F I D readers. Once the R F I D readers were installed, an in-house testing was conducted, and we started a pilot program from April to June utilizing five schools. Schools would then be Early, Jenkins, Deer Park, Newsome Park, and Booker T. Washington. During the first person, first part of August, we delivered student T-Pass cards and associated card printing equipment to all school sites. On September twelfth, we launched Student Ridership Program district-wide. Some our schools took the opportunity and had their students use the T-Pass during the first week of school to get them ready for the launch day. You want to know, how's it going? Overall, considering we just started a little bit of a month ago, I would say it's going well. T-Pass has helped us quickly identify students that were getting on the wrong bus and identify locations, locations of students for parents who were not using Here Comes the Bus app. While it's going well, we can do much better. To do better, within transportation, drivers and bus, bus assistants need to continue to enforce usage, usage of the car without denying students' transportation. From the schools, making sure they have multiple users at their schools trained and how, on how to make cards properly, and administrators enforcing students having their cards with them. If we stay constant in transportation and at the school level, we'll see tremendous strides in this program. While we have many schools doing well, I'd like to make special kudos to Greenwood Elementary School, Demby High School, and Woodside High School for a great job they're doing with their program. Moving forward, we'll continue to promote the T-Pass program through the district's various systems and social media platforms within the district. And lastly, we'll work with the Executive Directors, school administrators, to share best practices and figure out how we can make care on your car with you the new normal as we utilize the T-Pass in multiple places throughout the district. Baron, any questions? Oh, yeah, I knew as always.
Not a question, just a comment.
Since you're right here, Mr. Shay Coats, I just want to thank you personally for your assistance yesterday with the Missy Elliott Parade. Our marching bands, Demby High School and Heritage High School participated, with Irving Media Outlet was out there, national and local. And at first, the buses were having to leave and come back, but Mr. Shay Coats made it happen. The buses were able to stay. We were the only schools on the peninsula that was there, so I just want to thank you publicly for making those kids' lives come reality. I heard one of the kids say after seeing one of the college bands, "I want to go to college now." So, just making, just being open-minded and just making things happen on the fly. And I know that kind of puts you maybe in the tight man, but just thank you so much for, you know, just making things happen. That's what it's about, just adjusting, making things happen. So, I just want to thank you for making it happen.
I have a comment and question. Was he earlier? I'm very happy with transportation this year. I know we've had some little glitches, but I haven't gotten any five-thirty, six o'clock phone calls in the morning this year, so I'm happy about that. And regarding, you're talking about how do you make the card second nature for students? And I know you may not have the answer to this story, I mean, to this question, but are you aware of any technology being developed where the pass could be on students' phones, just like they tap for money?
Well, with the pass, the one thing with the difference between the pass and Mrs. Alexander's going to talk about, the way we use in the cafeteria, on the front of the card is the barcode. That has the students', student ID embedded in it. So, that's just barcode technology, anything that you see at a store that you can scan. So, you can actually use your phone for that. For T-Pass on the buses, we use R F I D type technology, a little bit more complicated. So, it's the whole card. So, if somebody punched a hole in that card, that, which we've seen so far, that whole card is, is null and void where you can still use the barcode, or you can use the, a piece of paper, has your student ID barcode in there, use that, so.
Just maybe in the future, though, because if you, if you really want to wait for them to keep up with that card.
And that's one of the things moving forward that my staff, we talked about too, is the R F I T technology is, it's tough, it's hard to use, and start, you know, actually, we're gonna, we talked to the vendor today, like, hey, can we get some R F I D readers, just put on a couple buses, see the difference? We tried it back like four years ago, and the readers they had were pretty slow for students getting on the bus, so that's something we might look at down the road to speed things up for students and maybe, you know, work well for us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As far as information on both cards, I'm assuming it's probably more.
Or P I D, a personal information, on the bus card, right? Does it have addresses and?
No, it's just, on that card is just your, I mean, within the, the software itself, it has that information, but for, somebody scanning, it would just scan, it would just pull up their student ID number if they were scanning.
Okay, all right.
And one thing we have found is, as we lose the cards, on the back, it tells return, we have got cards from the public in the mail, so people are actually returning them back to us.
That's great. Thanks.
This has probably already been thought of, but I don't know if it would help make it second nature, be it the things you could stick on the back of the phones, where they put the credit card, you know, you slip that in there, so it's always with their phone, or sometimes kids with the, you can, well, employees, we all have badges.
Right.
You know, the holders or the things that you pull out, the clips.
When we gave out the cards for our initial, when we, the cards for the students that we had, we gave out lanyards. So, they have lanyards and they do have plastic packets, it's just a lot of them like the...
So, you may want to put something on that can stick to the back of the phone, like you can slip your credit cards in. That might keep it with their phone if it can't be in their phone. I don't know if we can get any of those, we probably have them.
I believe, so Dr. Best asked my question.
Which was, getting the, getting the card on the phone, and so, great that you're looking into that and working towards it. And sounds like it's a wonderful program. Also wanted to say, Transportation, I think, is doing a fantastic job, and we're off to a really smooth year. Gotten very few phone calls this year, so we'll keep knocking on wood that it'll, it'll continue in that way. As far as the, the T-Pass and the longevity of it, are we seeing, is it about ten percent or twenty percent lost cards, or is, are we in the less than five percent lost card at this point?
We, we, we still haven't developed that data, getting from the schools, because a lot of, some of the kids went from school to school, so we just call where it wasn't lost, it just wasn't transferred over, so we haven't looked at that. And some of the schools, you know, they, we keep the cards at Transportation, so we kind of know how many we're giving out to them. I can get you a number.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the ones with holes and a mom concern. Thank you so much for all you and your team do. We really do appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'm following Mrs. Alexander.
So, I'm just gonna talk a little bit more about the T-Pass. So, we've implemented the T-Pass when they come through the lunch line in all of the schools. We purchase scanners for each serving line, and they can come through, and we can scan their card, and it pulls up their lunch ID number, and then we can ring it up that way. And with this year, I reported last, at our August meeting, I guess it was, that we had to, children had to bring up their ID numbers, put their ID numbers in. So, that was a big change post-COVID for them. So, we were really excited to get the scanners and be able to do that with the badges. It increases the speed of line immensely. They're working great. And then, as Shay alluded to, the students forget, that's the biggest challenge, is the students not bringing them, they have them in their bookbag and not, you know, on their lanyard, or they forget to bring them down to the cafeteria. So, but we do have keypad and scanners both hooked up, so if they forget, you know, they still can put in their, their number. So, any other questions?
One question. So, when the T-Pass pulls up their ID number, it pulls up the allergies and everything like you normally get punched in?
Yeah. All it's doing is reading the number, and then it pulls up the whole identity of the child, just like if they were to put their number in.
Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to incorporate technology in your process.
Yes, thank you.
If there aren't any questions, that concludes our monthly report. Thank you to all of our presenters. Great job.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item five point zero two, new and revised policies. Mr. Wright?
Yes, and we will call Mrs. Brooks back up to the podium.
Great. Good evening and thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Wright. It's a pleasure to share highlights from seven new and revised policies with you this evening. Now, as you know, one of the major roles of the school board is to set the policy direction for the school division. So, we're fortunate to have two school board members returning to the committee, Dr. Best and Mrs. Amen, along with a principal from each level, administrators from the Department of Teaching and Learning, and the Office of School Leadership, a teacher, our two attorneys, and then myself as the policy administrator. Now, this evening, I would like to share seven new and revised policies for review in two groups. First are those that are required by new state legislation, and as most of you know, we typically begin each policy year by revising our current policies or developing new ones to meet recent state mandates. And second are the policies that we develop to support best practices in the school division. Now, there are five policies resulting from recent legislation that I will highlight this evening, and they range from revisions to the school board's policy on participating in meetings virtually, to a new requirement for instruction regarding gambling prevention, to revisions addressing, addressing student attendance. So, I'll take a moment to speak to each of these. Now, a couple of years ago, the school board approved a policy to allow electronic meetings from remote locations when the governor has declared a state of emergency. Later, the state code expanded the provision for board members to attend meetings virtually under certain circumstances. Now, although we've been following the state code requirements since they were enacted, we are clarifying the language in our policy around the four circumstances when board members may participate in meetings virtually, and they are, one, when the board member has a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents him or her from attending. Second, the board member has a family member with a medical condition that requires him or her to provide care. Third, the board member's principal residence is more than sixty miles from the meeting location. Or fourth, the board member is unable to attend the meeting due to a personal matter, which is allowed no more than two times per year. And lastly, the school board members attending the meeting must vote on each request separately, and the votes must be recorded in the meeting minutes. Now, next, we are revising our current policy on the school year school day to add the requirement that the school board offer in-person instruction to every student enrolled in elementary or secondary school for at least nine hundred and ninety teaching hours per school year. We already have the nine hundred and ninety teaching hours in our policy, but we, the new requirement is that we add the term in-person. And as you are aware, we have well over nine hundred and ninety instructional hours in the board-approved calendar. Now, the exceptions to the policy are for emergency situations or student discipline issues that are noted in the state code. Now, currently, we have a policy that requires the school division to provide instruction on the use and misuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Now, the state is requiring school divisions to provide instruction on gambling abuse and on the potential for gambling addiction, so we've revised our policy to include that requirement. Now, next is a new policy that mirrors recent state legislation requiring school divisions to establish procedures that, one, identify all instructional materials with sexually explicit content; two, ensure parental notification of any instructional materials with sexually explicit content; third, permit parents to review all instructional materials with that content; and fourth, to ensure that alternative instructional materials are provided in a non-punitive manner for any students whose parent require, requests such materials. So, in keeping with the state code, the approved policy will become effective in January of two thousand twenty-three. And currently, our school division's instructional team is working to develop procedures to implement the requirements of the policy. And for our last policy in this group, we are revising our school division's student attendance policy to add four new requirements that allow school absences for the following reasons, and I shared these with you earlier this evening, but we'll review them once more for the viewing audience. First, for a student's mental or behavioral health. Second, one day per school year for middle and high school students to engage in a civic event. Third, a maximum of five days per year for students to participate in four-H educational programs or activities. And lastly, one day per school year for students to attend a powwow gathering if they are members of a tribal nation that is headquartered in Virginia, provided that the student's parents provide advance notice to their school. And as you are aware, we are revising the policies to the attendance procedure to curb excessive absenteeism in support of the school division's belief that daily attendance contributes to a student's academic success. Now, the last two policies that I will be sharing with you this evening are not required by law to be in board policy, but work to support best practices in the school division. The first is a revision to our policy on salary deductions, and the second is a new policy that prohibits employees from recommending certain medications to students. So, in addition to our current mandatory and voluntary employee payroll deductions that are addressed in our salary deductions policy, we are expanding it to allow deductions for programs that may be offered and sponsored by the school division in the future. And we also took the opportunity to add medical, dental, and vision benefits to the policy and to allow for any new school division-sponsored benefit that will be offered as a group plan in upcoming years. And although this has been a school division practice for years, this last policy is aligned to the state code in prohibiting school division employees from recommending the use of psychotropic medications for any student. The new policy defines psychotropic... The new policy defines psychotropic medications as medications that are prescribed. With the intent of altering mental activity, such as antidepressants and medications that treat hyperactivity. Now, however, our health services staff, classroom teachers, or other school provision, professionals. May recommend that a student be evaluated by an appropriate medical practitioner. With the written consent of the child's parents. So as I conclude my report this evening, I wanted to revisit our timeline for implementing the five-year review of our eleven policy chapters. That contain over four hundred policies, many of which also have implementing procedures and exhibits. So as we continue to develop or update the policies that may be required by state and federal mandates. And that support the school division's best practices. We will also initiate the review of our next policy chapter, which would be on human resources. So in terms of our next steps, our new and revised policies will come before the school board for action at your November fifteenth meeting. And once approved, the new and revised policies and procedures will be posted on our school division websites. And disseminated to our schools and to our public libraries. So this concludes my report this evening, I would be happy to respond to your questions. And I'd also like to take the opportunity, as Mrs. Searls Law said, to thank you for the input that you've been providing. As we do a deeper dive into our instructional policies and as we continue to move forward with the new policies that are required for this year, so. Thank you so much for your input and the feedback that we've received, we really appreciate it, thank you.
I just have a quick question on the um.
Benefits, because we, some benefits are already deducted, like some benefits, does this just catch the policy up to what we're doing?
Yes, and because, for example, we used to offer legal services and we had stopped that, we want to re-initiate that.
Okay.
So this will allow us to do that.
Thank you.
We'll cover that.
Yes.
Comment. I just wanted to thank the committee for your hard work and, and attentiveness and being a part of that committee. It is very time-consuming and, and it's something that you have to take very serious, so I just wanted you all to know that we do appreciate. The time and the effort that you put forth in giving us a good product to, to work with.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate it, the committee and the team working together, thank you.
Thank you, great, very much. Okay, Mr. Wright, do we have any updates on the attendance policy? That we are going to consider this evening?
Well, we, we provided those updates during our workshop today.
Thank you so much.
We hope you found that, uh, found that information helpful, so we're ready to turn it back over to you.
Sounds good, thank you so much. So, do I have a motion to approve moving that attendance policy that we've had some updates to? From um, a report earlier today in our work session to action this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve moving the attendance policy from reports to action.
And do I have a second for that? And is there discussion?
Madam Chair, uh, my comments on the policy change would be that. It's, I think it has the makings of a, of a truly effective policy. Uh, it's definitely needed, we, we saw the report tonight in our work session. On chronic absenteeism and we know the steps that we want to take. I still do at this time, though, feel that policy needs some additional work, I provided some comments and concerns. Um, minor edits that I believe will improve the policy, and I think. I would like to allow time for that to, that work to take place, and so at this time, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't support uh, moving forward. With adopting policy J H tonight.
Anybody else have comments on that particular policy at this time? I would definitely do want to thank the team um, for preparing that presentation, it was very conclusive. And allowed us to understand the direction we will go with our absenteeism policy to help us um, make sure that we're. Uh, meeting the accreditation requirements of the state. So, with that, would you please call the roll? It has to.
Yeah, there's no, there's no rule.
Okay, and the fact that, okay, so we don't actually have to call the roll for the no. Okay, his statement of the no is, is, is sufficient. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so that leaves us with the five point zero three. Um, the attendance report, five point zero four, membership report. Five point zero five, construction report, board members, you've received copies of these reports, are there any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to five point zero six. And let's see, I think we do have one more comment card. So I will call Reverend James Brown.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure to see you, Dr. Lawson, and the members of this great board, y'all are doing such a great job. And I commend the new people in administration that are coming on to continue the great work that you guys have done the last four years at least. Uh, especially in your efforts to produce another Huntington Middle School. Uh, which is very much needed in the southeast end of town. I came here tonight to get some information pertaining to the closing of the Scott Center. Uh, it's to my understanding that it's under the school board, but the city supplies its finances. We were shocked to find out this past Tuesday that the Scott Center was supposed to have been closed. No one knew, I called the superintendent this afternoon, he's gonna get back with me on information. Because no one knew who designated the timeframe for it to close. The Scott Center is very valuable in the east end section. All of the recreation centers down there are closed, the kids have nowhere to go. The ones who practice football, practice football uh, on the field, where the track field is right now. And when that center closes, you got a bunch of teenagers and young kids running the streets. Because there's nothing in Ritten, Shurka, Lassler Court, or any of these other places where we had five or six different uh, facilities. Set up for our kids. The Scott Center also had a feeding program. In which after-school kids come to the center and they eat. Plus, they have academics, they do their homework and stuff like that in the building. I'm afraid that if this facility closed down, the kids that are being bused now, I guess through the school board, what's gonna happen to them? These kids are at a very vulnerable age. And when I look at them, a lot of them are promiscuous, and I was listening to your report on dropouts. But situations like this create dropouts in schools, and you know what I'm talking about. Unattended children, lot of time on their hands, no guidance. So I'm trying to figure out who all of a sudden closed the, or said the school would be closed, and I understand construction, I understand that. If you're gonna prepare those grounds for new facility, new buildings, that's a lot of underground work, there are pylons that may be driven, the. Land has to be cleared off and all of that. But to have forty-five days or so to move out of a building, and they didn't even give us another place to go, we don't have anywhere to go, we're looking right now. Uh, to community, to churches and different facilities to bring these kids in, so we can continue to work with them. All kids are important, and as we saw tonight, education is very important, it's the key to our city advancement. It's the key to all we do, education. Our kids need to be educated here and have something to come back here for. So let's give them something, let's excite them, let's get them uh, in the mood to go off and do great and come back to this city of Newport News and help build this city up. That's what we need, we don't need to run them out of town, try to get new people in town, we got people here. That's just as equipped to keep this city running. And so that's my point, I'm trying to figure out who uh, had the bright idea to say the school was closed. And we got at least fifty, fifty people, young people, who will not have anywhere to go.
Thank you so, so much, we really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I know you've come a long way to.
Yes, ma'am.
Speak to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are going to move to comments of the Chief of Staff.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. On October sixth, representatives from the Department of Defense, Education Activity, visited several of our schools and classrooms to see. Of Cyber STEAM in action. As you may recall, the DODA awarded Newport News Public Schools a grant in two thousand eighteen to expand Cyber STEAM instruction. The representatives were impressed, yes, student and teacher voices were heard, and the work in action spoke. They spoke, demonstrated a clear focus and a program, and we were excited to be granted that money. And we will continue to capitalize on our Cyber STEAM program. As seen in the pictures here, our visitors saw our students demonstrating age-appropriate understanding of the engineering design process. And applying the knowledge to solve problems. They also witnessed student engagement in the classroom from our youngest pre-K learners to our middle school students. They also visited Cyber STEAM Labs, which were noted as wonderful spaces for students to innovate and for teachers to check out STEM materials. Special thanks to our STEM instructional team for their successful implementation of this grant. Next up, this month is National Principals Appreciation Month. On behalf of NMPS, uh, I think all of our principals, we thank all of our principals and assistant principals for their commitment to our students and staff. As a former principal, like many of us in the room, uh, we know firsthand um, how challenging and rewarding the job can be. Thank you so much to our principals and to our aspiring principals for what you do. October is not, not just our principal's month, every, every day is principal's month, so we appreciate you, alright? October is Disability and History, Disability History and Awareness Month. Throughout the school division, we are recognizing and celebrating the contributions and the history of um, people with disabilities. And increasing our public awareness around the rights of people with disabilities. This is also National School Bus Safety Week, and tomorrow is School Bus Transportation Employees Appreciation Day, let me say that again, that's a long one. School Bus Transportation Employees Appreciation Day. So if you see a bus driver and the bus is stopped, or if it's rotten, just wave and say thank you, blow a kiss, we appreciate them so much. We want to acknowledge and thank them for their professionalism, their dedication, we want to thank our transportation staff for what they do. And for ensuring the safety of our students, making sure that they're picked up and they arrive back home safe, we salute. Also, our bus assistants and our mechanics and our trainers and our dispatch staff and office staff, thank you for what you do. And finally, I'd like to remind all of our students and families that schools will be closed for students this Friday, October twenty-first. And Tuesday, November eighth, and I think November eighth is a big day, right? It's a big day, right? Okay, alright, I thought it was. So, Madam, Madam Chair, that concludes my comments, and I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, we will begin tonight's comments from the board with Douglas Brown.
Okay, so I'll go first tonight. Well, I'll just say once again that I'm very, I feel very privileged and very proud to be a part of a board where we have uh. Approved tonight a capital budget uh, that had two hundred and forty million dollars in it. I'm fairly, uh, my recollection is fairly good with numbers, so uh. I believe I recall around my first capital budget, it was around eighty million dollars, and at the time, I voted against it because I said. That is not, not reflective of the needs of the school division. And so I appreciate very much uh, over the last uh, eight years, how much work is and dedication by my fellow board members has gone into. Ensuring that we have a budget act that reflects our needs and actually, and accurately reflects uh, uh, transparency to the community of what our true capital needs are. And I'm very happy that uh, we were able tonight to pass a budget that reflects our needs, because I believe that that's our number one job. Regardless of behavior of city council and what we get, our job is to make sure that we've accurately asked for what is needed. And I do believe that we have asked for what is needed, and I want to highlight, once again, some of the great safety improvements to our school division that are in the budget. We've got eleven point four million dollars for moving, having secure front offices uh, for our building, so that all visitors will have to go through. Uh, the main office when they enter into our schools. We have uh, six hundred thousand dollars for elementary playground replacements. We have uh, ten million dollars in here for learning cottage replacements, which also gets kids back into the, the school building, makes them safer. Uh, provides uh, better, secure facilities for us, for our students, so. I'm adding up a total of more than twenty-one million dollars in safety improvements that we are pushing forward in this capital budget, which shows our priorities are in the right place. Um, making sure that our, our kids are safe. And then all, as well, it's very exciting that we've got in here uh, almost over eleven million dollars for athletics. For ensuring that we have adequate lighting, uh, so we can expand our middle school athletics programs. Uh, for seven million dollars for expanding athletic spaces, so that we can expand, again, those middle school athletic programs. So that's what I'm really excited about, the down payment that that's gonna make. On continuing to move us forward in terms of accreditation, because I believe that getting kids involved in clubs, activities, and sports. Giving them something positive to do in our schools is what's really gonna continue to drive our dropout rate lower. And continue to drive our accreditation rates higher. So, I believe this budget uh, accurately reflects uh, our needs and uh, very much appreciate the board. Uh, supporting, having our needs reflected in the budget, so thank you all tonight, and uh, please go out and make sure you vote on November the eighth.
Great, our student reps, we're doing this for all students, so please have your voice.
Thank you, um, the first stage meeting is actually next Wednesday on the twenty-sixth. And it's the first in-person meeting that we've had for, I think, two years now, so I'm really looking forward to be able to actually interact face-to-face. With students across Newport News schools to actually gauge like, what they're thinking, because I know when we were virtual. Most kids didn't like talking on the camera, so to be able to share that with um, the school board and be able to better understand what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
No comment, Madam Chair.
Coming this way, Mr. Ely.
For the, thank Newport News City for the amazing job they did with the STEM initiative they had at Brooks Crossing. A lot of our students from Newport News all over participated with STEAM and STEM initiatives, they was building roadblocks. They was just doing so much, and NASA was there, Langley was there, so many different companies were there, we're doing hands one-on-one with our children. Also, I want to say congratulations to Mitchfield Golf Tournament for running regionals, I believe Rebecca Allen signed us on the golf team, so congratulations to Mitchfield. I'm a monarch as well, so congratulations to them. Also, um, like you said Reverend, about the co, about the closing of. The um.
Scott.
Scott Center, it's definitely saddened, and I think as a school division. Not just the Scott Center per se, work on how we could do a community school partnerships with a lot of our gyms. I remember growing up, the gyms for the schools, they were open, there were recreation gyms, McGruder was recreational. Um, Newser Park was recreational, so I think we need to have those conversations with our, um, our city. How can we make our schools, if we provide the space, the gyms, how can we have that partnership with the city? We're providing staff for that, because the more children that we have off the street and involved in positive activities. The less crime rates we'll have, when you go into a lot of our community centers now, there's not too much going on. And it's, or they're not open with the, you know, staff, but I think if we work on some type of partnership with schools and community centers. I think we would do a lot, it will be a lot of um, great things and a lot of things accomplished in it. So I think something in the future, that's something we can work on, is figuring out how we can offer those services, because ultimately, we want to keep our kids off the street and like. We said earlier, when kids are busy, or a lot of times, better task scores, because a lot of time, these coaches and recreation. Uh, facilitators, they access mentors, or access mentors to kids, or sometimes role models, or sometimes the only parents they do know. Um, so I, I definitely agree a hundred percent on having alternative motives, and it, and I was staking it in the back of the head, and head. Even with the reconstruction of doing the new Huntington Middle School. It should have been one done, you do Huntington, leave doors smaller open, but the plan is kind of like, you're not gonna have anything down there, so. What's it gonna be playing forest recreation in the eastern community? So what's it going to be playing for is recreation in the east end community. So I guess that's a city slash, if the school system can kind of take the lead on it and say, hey, we're going to offer recreation because we don't want to leave our children out there with no options. And basketball is a huge thing. I know a lot of the guys at Doris Miller, you ride past, it's packed during the daytime. I don't know what's going on, but it'd be packed with people playing bad. I guess it's their day off. It's, it's utilized by adults and children. So to take recreational totally out of our city pretty much for, who knows how long that's going to be? It's something maybe the school system can work with the city on moving that agenda forward. So thank you for those comments. And I think the school system, we've always been kind of community-oriented to do what's best for the city and the school system. Sometimes I feel like we played dual roles of the citizens, but I think we, we can move that forward to give our community something to do.
Mrs. Ayman?
Sure, thank you. And I think there's, there's something percolating here because Mr. Brown was talking about, and I think it is important, especially in middle school, getting more sports and clubs and involvement as the students feel ownership of their school, their mascot, their teams. That's more buy-in. That keeps them engaged and focused on school and activities. And then also for the community to have that. I think we saw during COVID with everything shutting down, it left, it left students, children, and others with nothing to do. So you ended up with worse outcomes. So we, we know that now. I think there may be a real opportunity, be it with through Parks and Rec. I know they do a lot for us, but there may be some good synergies here. The more we can do to use and offer what we have to get the kids engaged and the community engaged, especially when we have some transition while something needs to be built. I think there could be something really good for the community here.
Mr. Hunter?
Great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. From the graduation rates to the dropout rate. And I do want to thank where I'm employed at, at my alma mater, Hampton University. It was great to see our new president, President Williams here and his lovely wife. And the things and the partnerships that we look forward to partnering with Newport News Public Schools and Hampton University. I do want to give another thanks to those who worked on the CIP budget. You know, I, I've worked in budget many years, you know? Sometimes, you know, what I tell folks, it's not about what we want. It's not about sponsorships. That's what we, that's what we've been looking for from the city, to sponsor the schools, support us. But it's not about sponsorships. It's about partnerships. It's about partnerships. It's about collaborative. If we ever want to get them to go to, you know, you know, revenue sharing, things that sort. We have a brand-new city council coming in. We, we don't want to start off on the bad foot. It's about partnerships. It's not about sponsorships. And so when we have individuals that are sitting here, that are, that are senior folks, this is what they do. I said this before. This is what they do. You know, some of the issues that we've had at some of our schools is because this board, self-included, have gone against advice, what we pay people for. And so I'm passionate, passionate that, you know, we get this right and not start off on the wrong foot within a brand-new city council that we know we're going to have. It goes for these policies that we have, that we're putting policies, again, on delay that will have an effect that we can't put in place because accreditation, part of accreditation, you have to be in school. So no, it may not be everything that we want, but we needed to put something in place today. Where school has started. School has started. You know, don't look at the students. Look in the mirror like Michael Jackson says. Look in the mirror at ourselves. Seriously. We're making lives and decisions for students and their families and one that we can't present to their mothers and fathers and say, this is what has to be done, and we can start this today. So we're going to lose another month, another month, before we can put that into operation. We're better than that. We're better than that. It's about compromise. That's what I do for a living. I build relationships. That's what I do. I've been doing it all my life. And I exceed it in lots of things that I've done because about partnerships. That's what we do. So when we make decisions, even at the Huntington, that school may not be in the same exact place, but let me tell you what, those kids to go there, they are going to a brand-new school, man. You know, this brand-new school, it can't be about what we want. We have to say what's best for those students. What's best for those students? I want us to be passionate and think about, and stop thinking about self. Stop thinking about self. Everything that I do is always going to be funneled through the prism. What's best for our students and our teachers and our staff and our workers here and for the families? But great things are happening in Newport News, and we do have a CIP. And I hope that, you know, we're able to move ourselves from getting away from what I want or what I want or what we want and what is best for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Dr. Best?
Good evening, and I would just like to say happy Principal's Month to all of our school administrators. We know that you work hard, and I'd like for you to know that we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
So I think my sentiment this evening is we've heard a lot of really good conversation. That's important for a board, to have that conversation. And we should have it publicly too, as we did tonight. So I'm sorry we've gone a bit long. I do want us to make sure that we are putting students and families first with all of the decisions that we're making. I am a bit concerned that we will be waiting several weeks before we get this attendance policy in the front of our families. Can we recover from that? I believe so, because we're Newport News Public Schools. I hope everybody has a good evening. Meeting adjourned.